Mike's on Mike, a conversation about politics, government and Jacksonville with 50 year opinion leaders, Mike Hightower, Mike Tolbert, and award winning broadcaster and longtime political observer, Mike Miller.
Welcome once again to another episode of Mike's on Mike. I'm Mike Miller here, of course, with Mike Hightower is in studio with me. Mike Tolbert is back at the farm and we're delighted to have you with us today. Now that Mayor Deegan rather has unveiled this second budget for the city of Jacksonville, this will be the first of two podcasts that we're going to be doing. That's going to be well, basically focusing on that budget, talking not only about where the money is going, but also the politics behind it. It's very important. As you know, of course, she is a Democrat and there is a, a super majority of Republicans that are on the city council. And the only way this 1.9 billion dollar budget or anything close to it will get passed is if it gets nine votes from the city council. So that's what we're going to be focusing on today. We're going to be doing it from studio and next week, we're going to be doing it with the mayor from the mayor's office at city halls. So you'll want to tune in for that.
Mr. Miller, I hate to just say he needs 10 votes, not nine.
That's correct. 10 votes. I am sorry.
By by that was an unpaid announcement from Tolbert and I who spent 50 years each doing this because we want to remember that.
So the podcast with the mayor will be airing the week of August the 5th. So please mark it down in your calendar. But our guest today is Florida politics columnist, AG Gankarski. This is the first time now AG has been on our program. We've had other columnists on sometimes multiple times like Nate, who's been on three times and Andrew Pantazzi has been on twice. So AG, this is the first of more than one appearance you'll be making on, on Mike's on Mike, if, if we don't screw it up too much for you. AG joined Florida politics back in 2014 and for 15 years before that, he was a columnist with Folio Weekly. He also writes for the New York Post and the National Review and we're delighted to have you on with us remotely or anyway, but thank you, AG for coming on Mike's with Mike.
Hey, thanks for having me on. It's a pleasure.
You bet. Mr. Tolbert, kick it off for us, please.
Sure. AG, it's good to see you again. It's been a while.
Yeah.
I doubt, I don't know if you recall this, but the first time we ever met was back in, I think, 1995 or so. When I was doing the inside source and you and I had coffee in Riverside, I think it was Starbucks. And I remember that very well. I hope my memory's not fading on me.
No, they've renovated Starbucks list then, but still there.
Yeah, let's just go to the basics. People who don't know what Florida politics is, and I can't imagine there are many around. Tell us what it is and what you do there.
Well, Florida politics has been around for a little over a decade. I was kind of on the ground floor of it. And basically what we do is politics, policy campaigns are really heavy right now. And of course, local issues such as budgets are a big deal too. My focus on Northeast Florida, I also handle the statewide stuff like whatever interesting thing Ron DeSantis says in the given day, the Rick Scott reelection campaign against probably Debbie McCarthy Powell. Those are also in my bucket. So I did quite a bit. And we also have the Jacksonville Bold Newsletter. It comes out every Wednesday. It's also on the website. So if you go to Florida Politics around three o'clock, 3:30 on Wednesday, it's usually there collaborating with Drew Dix and formerly of the Times Union and some other people on that.
What makes Florida politics different from other publications?
I just think we go a little bit more inside baseball than, you know, some of the others like the TV or the Times Union. We deal a lot more with process, a lot more with, you know, it's more granular, just because it's a specialty trade publication as opposed to, you know, some things more general. So yeah, that's the advantage there. A lot of our readership, they're plugged in one way or the other. Yeah, everybody from lobbyists to politicians to aides, all of those people tend to read it a lot. So it's pretty influencers and we tend to be ahead of the curve on most things. And, you know, we predict a lot of things that are going to happen before they do, like leadership races, things like that. We're as plucked as anybody in the state.
I remember some of your colleagues, I worked with them when I was in Tallahassee. AG, one of the reasons why we had you on here is you did an incredible review of the mayor. So we're going to cover a couple of subjects today, but we want to really talk about Mayor Deegan's budget. In a recent column about the city council Republicans from the mayor's budget, you begin with this line, Mayor Deegan has had an audacious, audacious first year. In your opinion, what caused it to be audacious? Audacious. I had to look that up because one, I can only do single syllable words and it has to be big thought. And so that took two pages.
I want you to know something.
I knew this was coming.
Hightower and I were on the phone for 20 minutes yesterday and I was trying to get him to read the script right.
I didn't come up with audacious. We'll just leave it there. Anyway, back, back.
I had to look it up too.
Good company.
Yeah. Well, AG, you had to look it up. But seriously, that, that is a strong word. And as Mike Miller just talked about, and one of the things that Mike Tolbert and I've talked, for you to use that kind of language with this mayor, and when you look at the super majority of Republicans, most of which are part of the Baker Boys, explain to us what caused you to use the word audacious?
Well, the mayor, she took advantage of having the bully pulpit of the mayor's office, you know, being elected. She did things like remove the Confederate monument from the park in Springfield, just before the end of last calendar year. She's been very bold with the stadium deal. You can debate the finances of the stadium deal, but what you can't debate is that she was successful in shepherding that three with the help of then council president Ron Salem. They had a very efficient process. She resisted calls for a referendum on that too, saying that it was up to elected leaders to lead. So that was, that was one of the things she did was pretty gutsy. Yeah, she's basically had to deal with the super majorities you put in Republican side, a lot of Tim Baker clients. And, you know, if you compare it to the last Democratic mayor, Alvin Brown, who was dealing with a very constrained budget through all four years and was being very careful not to seem overtly Democrat. What Deegan has done, she's basically leaned into her political identity and she's realized that she is the most popular politician, the best known politician by far in the city. Nobody comes close, as, as you all know very well, city council people don't really have name recognition or public profile. That's the mistake they, they realize that once they run for mayor and you're like, oh, nobody knows who I am. Whoops. Mayor Deegan, you know, everybody knows who she is. And she took advantage of the first year to get a lot of things done. Labor deals struck with the police and fire unions. That's a big deal. We don't know what that's going to cost down the road to send them into the Florida retirement system. But the fact that she was able to do that, bring TK Waters and Steve Zona and these people who are diagnosed as Republicans at this point in their political evolution, bring them to the table and say, you know, have them endorse her deal. That's a really big one because we get to 2027, it's going to be hard for public sector unions, public safety unions specifically to back a Republican, given that Mayor Deegan, unlike Mayor Curry, has given them exactly what they want. But, and here's the big but, you know, the, the price is yet to become due on these proposals, these initiatives. So it's going to be interesting to see what she does. But she front loaded a lot of stuff and invested a lot of political capital to unleash a lot of public capital for her projects and priorities.
Yeah, I just want to, is we talked about this earlier, AG. I think a lot of people underestimated her and, and I think to their own peril.
It's a good point. Of course, when unveiling the 1.9 billion dollar budget, she, she described it as being a lean budget. I found it interesting because everything we hear out of Tallahassee from DeSantis and his people is all of this money that we're getting and we've, you know, we've outpaced all of the revenue projections and all of the other, you know, dire predictions about not getting revenue coming into the state to pay for state programs. Why are they so flush with money and the city of Jacksonville so lean?
Well, I don't, I don't know if they are as flush with money as they were. A lot of what boosted local and state budgets was pandemic era funding from the Trump administration and Biden administration. You know, that money is supposed to be programmed in the state level. Some of it was, some of it wasn't. And, you know, in that sense, it, it made things look a little bit rosier than they were locally. We saw the same phenomenon with hundreds of millions of dollars coming in during the Curry administration. But now that faucet's been churned off and we're back to more of a fiscal reality without the pandemic spending and, you know, the accompanying, you know, expansion of the monetary supply. I mean, you know, it's another thing that factors in and makes this budget look a little bit leaner into 1.9 billion dollars than it is because the money isn't worth what it was a few years ago. You know, after money was dollars were introduced in the system to boost pandemic spending from Republican and Democratic presidential administrations. So, you know, that's one reason that, you know, this budget, it's one of the most controversial things about it. Mayor Deegan is programming $47 million reserves because village collections are $62 million down from what was projected, even though they're up 73 million year over year. And a lot of that is commercial real estate sector. There's a big clamor, get back to the workplace, you know, no more work from home. But commercial real estate isn't what it used to be. And that is really hurting along with the fact that the residential housing market has basically flattened out in terms of valuations. We're seeing a lot more for sale signs and, you know, interest rates are up too. So that's another thing that means a 1.9 billion doesn't go as far as you might think, looking at the top line of the budget.
You know, the other thing too, and I've had people ask me this question. They said, Mike, with all the construction going on and all of the multifamily units that are going in, I mean, you can, you can see new apartments and condos being built everywhere. They're saying, what about the revenue from that? But what they forget is that you've got to create the infrastructure in order to provide services that those new residents are going to need. You're going to need more police. You're going to need more fire. You're going to need more schools. You're going to need more roads. You're going to need new sewer and water. I mean, there are a lot of infrastructure costs that go into those new apartments that are being built, more so than whatever revenue is going to be coming out of, you know, the ad valorem taxes from those, from those units, correct?
Correct. And, you know, with many of these development deals, there's no, there's no language to require the developers to spend on infrastructure. And, you know, so basically this is taxpayer burden. It's, you know, privatized profits, socialized costs, the oldest game in the world. So, you know, something like that, you expand on in southeastern Duval County, that cost is basically spread out to all kinds of established neighborhoods. And, you know, we're seeing more rental housing go online too, which, you know, is, is an interesting development because, you know, it, it cuts into the amount of people who are invested in the city as property owners. So they're kind of insulated from this in one sense, but the other sense is passed on to them via higher rents and higher cost of living and other ways.
And just last, the people down in St. John's County, the county commission in St. John's County about trying to keep up with the growth that they're experiencing there. They're, I mean, they're, they're having a very tough time. So don't think that we're immune from that. We're going to have those same issues facing us at some point as well.
We really have had those issues for decades. It's just every time we have a boom, those issues recur and, you know, 55 years after consolidation, our local leaders haven't figured it out. And obviously they want developer money to win elections, especially Republicans. But, you know, the, the cost of that developer money, you know, going into the PACs or what have you, it, it comes out of the taxpayer budget priorities.
Yeah, you know, it may be a lean budget, but she's, the mayor's not scraping on some of the spending. I'm going to go over a list here. They've got $430 million for capital improvements, 46 million for solid waste, over 11 million for stormwater projects, 36 million for parks, 38 million for building improvements at UF Health, 150 million for stadium renovations, which is getting it ready for the 1.4 billion dollar renovation. The list is long and it, it appears to be pretty comprehensive, maybe, but then maybe lean. With a, my question is this, with a city council dominated by Republicans, do you anticipate that the mayor will have as easy a time with this budget as she did with the stadium? What are you hearing about where the council is on some of this?
Well, I'm expecting a really tough August for this budget and the finance committee. And in part because communication between the mayor's office and now finance chair Ron Salem was nil before the budget was introduced. And Salem's not a fan spinning out of reserves. It's supposedly one time spending, according to the mayor. But, you know, realistically, if you make that a habit, it, it's no longer one time spending. And, you know, it, it raises questions for him. It's going to raise questions for the finance committee. And I, I think you're going to see a number of amendments, both in August and, you know, those day long meetings that take up much of the month with finance. But you're also going to see floor amendments, you know, September, when they vote on the deal itself. I'm, I'm expecting the council to push back, you know, compared to Deegan's first budget, which was largely prepared by the Curry team. You know, this, this is her initiatives and these are really her priorities in many ways. And I don't think they're going to fight over the stadium spending. But I do think there are questions about the mechanism here used to basically fund what they're trying to do in the second year.
Well, you've talked about some of the hurdles though, AG. I'm, you know, when you start seeing, to Mike's point, when he made that list, it'll be interesting. I'm just wondering if one of those hurdles that they won't have is that you have what, six or seven of the city council members who work for nonprofits. If they're, if they're employers who they work for or they run, will their projects go through as they did at midnight on the last one? Do you, you foresee that type of thing or do you see some horse trading going on?
I think with nonprofit spending, there's always a sort of magical acceptance. It doesn't matter what party they're from, that all the nonprofits that city council people work for are protected. And that's sort of the, the forced collegiality on the dais. They may disagree over one issue or another, but, you know, when it comes to feathering their own beds, there is nobody like the Jacksonville City Council. You can bet on that. So that is one place I don't expect spending to be reduced.
Yeah. We talked about that last week, about the ethics of why they will nitpick, you know, the stadium or nitpick capital, or as Mike said, for parks or building improvements. But when it comes to their own nonprofits that they work for or get a salary from somehow, it's two sets of rules.
Very true.
Absolutely.
Let's change topics for just a couple of moments and talk a little bit about, about statewide politics. AG, what's your take on, let's start with the two referenda, the one that will legalize recreational marijuana and the other ones which will codify abortion rights in the state of Florida. What are you hearing about those? Are they going to hit that 60% level?
Yeah. I mean, so far polling is good on them, but DeSantis has definitely stepped up his offensive against them. I listened to him give a speech to the Florida Sheriff's Association today. And he talked about how was a Canadian marijuana company, presumably referring to Trulieve, bankrolling this amendment largely on the cannabis side. There's a political committee. I think it's no on three or something along those lines that's been recently set up for that. Also the hemp industry, interestingly enough, is funneling money through the Republican Party of Florida for the same initiative. What, what DeSantis done, he's triangulated between the commercial hemp industry and the cannabis industry because they're, they're really two different sectors, even though the plants have much more similarity than difference. And, you know, so it's, it's interesting to see how that plays. But I, I feel like marijuana, these multi-state operators that want this amendment have had such a head start. It's going to be challenging, but if DeSantis can get Republicans to turn against the amendment, then, then it may work. I mean, 60% is the high threshold in the end. Regarding the abortion amendment, you know, that's an interesting one also. Democrats have been much more vocal on that one. And, you know, the, the argument for it is basically it would reverse the restrictions that have happened in Tallahassee post Dobbs regarding abortion. The 15 week ban became the six week ban with a couple of exceptions. You know, and that's really the thing. Polling says that Republicans are open to this. I think the six week ban that DeSantis pushed through last year was intended for the presidential election. He wanted to get to the right of Donald Trump on abortion and he, he did that. But, you know, ideas have consequences. And one consequence to that idea is that it's been unsafe for women who might need the procedure for one reason or another. Six weeks in pregnancy, you don't even know if you're pregnant many occasions. And you can't get a doctor's appointment. It's silly. It's not like there's, you know, a glad of doctors able to perform the procedure. If you find out five weeks in, it's like you can go to the next day. So with this in mind, you know, it's one that, that could be appealing, could drive turnout for Vice President Harris, Debbie McCarthy Powell, these people on the ballot. But I do expect the saying this to message more aggressively on this as we get close to November. And I think it's going to be tight in the end for both of these.
By the way, I was at a function that, that Andrew Pantazzi had this week over at the nonprofit center. It was for the, it was, it was basically a vote 2024. And one of the panelists that he had on there was opposed to the marijuana amendment. And as we started talking and I asked a question of him, I said, I said, I don't understand what is your opposition from it? And as it from, stemmed from, and as it turned out, he lobbies for a company that makes the medical marijuana cards that those of us who have cards have to carry along with us. And you pay for that card, by the way, every year. You've got to get it renewed. And what his concern was, is he said, the way the recreational pot amendment is written is that you wouldn't have medical marijuana needs anymore because anybody could buy the product. You don't have to obviously prove that you have a medical reason for it. And that would impact negatively impact his company that prints the cards for medical marijuana customers. And I said, so you're opposed to the whole idea because of the cards that your client makes? And he says, basically that's the case.
Well, it's good to know that special interests are still alive. I was, you know, I was really afraid after all.
How did he get all the panels?
Yeah. I was afraid special interests has sort of gone off, but God knows it's still there.
But, you know, here's, here's the thing about the cannabis amendment. It's, it's worth mentioning because you look at the doctors who prescribe it and many of these doctors wouldn't have any other job if it weren't for, you know, signing off on these desultory, you know, consultations. So there's not, there's that part of the industry also. But, you know, the state has the right to do rulemaking if this amendment passes. So they could impose taxation on recreational that they don't, don't do on medical. They could give medical patients priority. This happens in other states. I mean, this idea that it's just an unfettered market that would be created because of the amendment, there's going to be plenty of rulemaking around it if and when it passes. And I expect it to pass eventually. If it's not this year, it'll be a future cycle. So I, I think the arguments against it have been made, have been spurious. They've, they've been kind of deceptive. DeSantis has talked about how you can take a bunch of joints into marijuana, into an elementary school if it passes, which there's no way. You can't take that anymore. You could take in a fifth of Jack Daniels or, or whatever else. Yeah. So there's a lot of fear mongering around this. And, but as, you know, you all know as well as I do, fear mongering works with a subset of voters in the state of Florida.
Some of the stuff that DeSantis has been saying is so nonsensical and illogical. You have a hard time even responding to it. You mentioned, he said you could bring 20 joints into an elementary school. He also said you could throw the, at the dispensary, they could throw fentanyl into the mix. And then he says something about it doesn't smell very good. It smells putrid. When I read this stuff and listen to this stuff coming out of him, I'm wondering what the hell he's smoking, you know?
Yeah. I mean, he, he kind of uses the old gish gallop technique, you know, just kind of throwing the wall, see if they stick. And they, they seem to sometimes, but, you know, he's basically, again, it comes down to he's trying to use scare tactics. And, you know, honestly, with medical right now, if, if you're walking around, you go to a shopping center or whatever, you definitely notice it already. And I don't know if that would appreciably go up because the threshold for getting a medical card is pretty low. You can get diagnosed by the doctor same day and you're buying your product. And, you know, some of these diagnoses are more spurious than others. You know, PTSD, for example, how do you prove PTSD? Yeah. So it's like, that, that's basically where it is. So you have a program that's pretty liberal already in terms of the threshold for entry. And, you know, also with, with Florida, you got a hard, a lot, a large tourist population and transient population, the snowbirds. So a recreational framework would allow them access to the medicine they need because right now Florida's program doesn't have reciprocity. You can't take a medical card from, say, New Jersey and go into a Florida dispensary and buy anything. So, you know, if the state wanted to make good faith changes to the medical program, they would have done so already. And, you know, that, that I think mitigates against the argument that they're trying to protect people, especially given with the hemp industry right now. You can go to a so-called smoke shop, you can buy Delta nine, you can buy Delta 10, you can buy HHC, all these alternative cannabinoids that are basically the same things you would find in commercial marijuana, you can find in hemp either organically or synthesized. So as Walton Charles used to say, that dog don't hunt.
One, it's really good to have Tolbert back. I mean, he's always good for, whether he's, whether he's here with us or in the barn.
No matter what you put in the punch bowl.
But I, I also want to just say, as, as AG was going through all those different products, I've learned something every day on this show.
It's another aha moment for Michael.
I've had to write about hemp and cannabis for years and I know way too much about it.
I do want to ask a political question, AG. This kind of goes back when, when Mike raised the issue. Tolbert, given that he is obviously going to go out front on both these issues and given the fact was he went maybe a bridge too far on the six week ban. And given the fact was he didn't make where he thought he was going to be running for president. Do you, you or your colleagues foresee that he's really got the political juice that he's going to be able to bring that kind of political influence on two major ballot initiatives, given the fact is that he's only got two more years?
You know, that's a good question. And, you know, again, I look at the threshold. If we're 50%, I would say he couldn't sink it. But at 60%, it's possible because you do have a Republican plurality in the state. He did get 60% of the election two years ago. So DeSantis has some political capital, even though his approval rating is closer to 50 now to 70. The honeymoon was over for Ron DeSantis. He spent a lot of his political capital. But, you know, because amendments are so tough to get over, it's going to be worth watching till the end. And even if I see a poll that says, you know, the abortion amendment or the cannabis amendments at, at 65%, I wouldn't say it's over because there's so much variance in polls, online polls, they, they tend to trend more liberal. And, you know, I think polling in a state in general, it tends to have a liberal bias compared to actual electoral performance.
I just wonder about the, the effect of these two amendments on turnout, AG, because especially now that the Democrats have a new top of the ticket. And what we're hearing, of course, we don't know yet, but what we're hearing is that that's going to spur more excitement in turnout because Biden's not on the head of the Democratic ticket. But I'm wondering whether or not that's going to have a positive or a negative impact on these two referenda. If in fact they're, you know, we're not going to become a blue state. I think we, we all realize that. We used to be purple. I don't think we'll ever be blue. But I'm wondering if we might be changing a little core towards purple as a result of these two referenda and the turnout that we might get in November. What do you, what do you think on that, AG?
Yeah. I mean, that's a good question. I, I do think it's going to drive Democratic turnout. I think Democratic turnout is going to be more juice with Kamala Harris on the ballot because, or at the top of the ticket rather, you know, because she's, she's a first time, you know, candidate, first woman to top a major party ticket, first black woman, first South Asian woman, a lot of firsts there. So there's a, there's a story there. Some Democrats have compared it to Barack Obama 2008. The jury is way out on that one. But I do think you're going to see a net positive effect in terms of Harris versus Biden when it, when it comes to these amendments.
You really don't see a big change in Florida though, do you, AG?
No, I mean, I think Trump ultimately carries the state, assuming he makes it to November. But I, I don't know if JD Vance helps him in terms of Florida voters, especially independent voters. independent voters. You know, Vance has had a lot of statements that played well on things like Tucker Carlson and shows like that on abortion and women's rights. You know, he, he once said that childless women are basically cat ladies and indebted regarding Kamala Harris. And I, I think he's become a lightning rod for sort of, you know, social conservatism. He's kind of embodying, you know, the worst of that to the swing voters, to female voters, and to people who are sympathetic to reproductive rights as an issue.
Which JD Vance are we going to see? The JD Vance who called, you know, Trump America's Hitler? Or the JD Vance who's now obviously completely on board with Trump and his policies?
Are we still doing observations?
Yeah, well, just asking the question. It wasn't my comment, it was his.
Leading the witness.
Even if you get the Republican win in the race for the White House, you're going to have a, a significant minority of Republicans and probably a majority of independents who are going to back these amendments. You know, Tallahassee, the, the super majority Republican legislature, they don't really reflect the state. They draw maps very creatively. You know, you shouldn't have 70% of the House and Senate being Republican in a state where you've only got about a million more Republicans than Democrats. And, you know, who draws the maps wins. But, you know, this is where citizens' initiatives come in, you know, so clutch, because they allow people to have a say and to offer corrective when the legislature goes too far. And that's what I'm kind of expecting to happen in November.
What do you think about Scott? Has he got vulnerabilities? Or do you think he's, he's a, he's a walk-in?
I, I think Rick Scott is pretty well positioned. I think Debbie McCarthy Powell, who's a likely nominee for the Democrats, she's run kind of a one-note campaign, you know, talking about reproductive rights as her issue. Rick Scott's had his typically disciplined campaign, you know, building coalitions, stressing them, always finding a way, it's a message. And he has the advantage of incumbency. So I think Scott will run more or less as well as Trump does. And as we know from following Rick Scott for a decade and a half, all he needs to win is 50.1%. So he's very careful in seeing how far right he can go. And then a little faint to the left toward the election, like if you remember 2014, it was close. So he teased expanding Medicaid. That didn't last long. But, you know, he, he floated that, and that was something that bought him a little bit of time. And, you know, so he's a master at that. And I, I think Republicans really want him in the state to win, because he could be, you know, Senate caucus leader. He's running in that leadership race. Republicans take majority of the Senate, and he's sent a majority leader. There's a lot he can do for the state. Debbie McCarthy Powell's never going to be in that position in the Democratic caucus. So that may be a consideration for the really wonky people out there.
You've been doing some good work for a long time, and it's needed now more than ever. And I, I think the three of us, I can't speak for these two guys, but I know I'm very grateful for what you do every day, day in and day out.
Yeah, we can look at it October for sure, because I, I think by then we're going to have a lot more to talk about. And we're going to have some better polling and better data, can be more specific, less speculative.
We'll look forward to it. Thank you, AG, very, very much for being with us. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys. It was a pleasure.
Okay. That's going to do it for us. As we said, this is part one of a two-part series on the mayor's budget. The next week, it's going to be with Mayor Donna Deegan. We're going to be doing it from her offices at City Hall. You won't want to miss that. And we thank you very much for joining us. Once again, and our special thanks, of course, to our sponsor, the Jacksonville Historical Society, inside the Jacksonville History Center. Thank you, Alan Bliss, and the many donors who keep the lights on and the cameras rolling for this podcast. We'll see you again next week. Thanks very much for joining us.
Y'all take care.